I'll order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. This, we're gonna start with a special meeting for September 13th, 2016. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among American cultures.
I'd like to start today's meeting with a moment of silence for the slain police officer from Almagorda, Clint Cordavis. Please join us in a moment of silence. So, on the agenda, there's just one item. Is there any changes need to come on the agenda?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, I'll second that motion. There's a motion to approve the special meeting agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is approve or disapprove resolution number R-1648, certificate of property rates in mills for the tax 2016. Mr. Sessner, I think you have a little presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. No, we did the last time.
No, we didn't.
Yeah. Actually, I just thought to talk to the county manager and I asked her, do you want me to show the numbers at this moment? And she said, just fine. However, what I usually do is I set my certifications from what we certified in, what we certified in June. And then I compare them to see exactly what the certificate of tax rate comes in on September. So, I do have the one end, I mean, excuse me, the PTD twos and threes, elevens and thirteens. And let me explain on the PTD twos, that those are your valuations from your protested and your unprotested. Your PT threes are your actual values. So, I'm gonna go on the PTD twos, okay? And I'm just gonna do the totals that is, that's non-residential. And for the non-residents, about 153 million, that's state, that's a local assessment. If you do the totals, you're looking at 563 mill, just in the assessments residential and the non-residentials. And those are very important on the PTD twos. PTD threes are actually, as your state assesses, your valuation maintenance and your net new. And that's how it's pretty much aligned with the rates. You're looking at total unprotested value of 410 million. On the non-residential, you're looking at 153 millions. And state assess is involved in all this, however, copper production is not in it. That comes in later on. I'm just gonna do the totals. And on the totals, you're looking at the total unprotested value of 563, 563, 795, 218. And the total net taxable value, you're looking at 56, 56, 56, 85, 91. So, I also put through the Watershed District. I think that's always pulled out through the PTD elevens. Now, these are the cattle, excuse me, the cattle and livestock is totally separate at 8 million. And that is brought in totally separate with the non-residential. And here's the question that, just in case of the, if the four mills do pass, and I did contact the Department of Finance and Administration, and I was just wondering if after those 8 mill, that's under a non-residential, if they pay on the four mills? And the answer was that they don't. And I just wanted to make sure to clarify that because I did contact them because that's a pretty big chunk of change when it comes down to it. And that's just cattle and it is considered a non-residential. Okay, I'll also pull up the Watershed District. Let me just do this. Okay, we also have to pull the Watershed District out of the Hila area. And there's about 450 accounts. And I'd have to do the residential, non-residential on that. And these are the ones where we, like I said, we certify in June. In September, we actually have five days for the county commission to accept the rates. And can we see the numbers over there, Commissioner? Okay, let me see if I can.
A little.
Yeah, no, it's, there we go. So, what we certified is 841 million, 061, 500. And that's actually, that's copper included. In reality, the, the rates didn't really change all that much. We went up about 18 million in total values. And I also broke it down into school districts, if you guys wanna look at that also. But in reality, everything pretty much stayed the same. And talk to the county, let me see if those numbers, you can see at this moment, the blue numbers on top, that's what we certified last year. And last year, it's pretty small. I think we're gonna have to do a negative a little bit next time around. But the immediate numbers, those are the negative numbers, okay? But the rate action didn't change all that much. It was interesting that Hurley increased over 400,000 under evaluation. So, like I said, once again, the rates didn't change all that much. I simplified it for a tax.
Why would Hurley change 400,000?
You know what? You know what? We did a, we did a report on it. And there were some sales there that, that did increase. And not only that, there was some personal property that was brought in. And up to about $300,000 of personal property on some businesses that weren't rented in the past. So, we actually put them on the books. And I'm so glad that they did. And everything was legit. And it had to do with sales and it had to do with, with personal property.
So, when a house sells, it goes on the books at that, at the sales price?
No, I comp it out. Whatever it is worth, that's what I put on the tax rolls. In the past, we've just been shooting sales for the last 20 years. And, and what has happened is what was sold for, that's what we put on the books. However, now, we comp everything out, and what is worth, that's what we put on the books. And I've talked to the villagers about that. They give me their data. I get their, I give them my data and we work together. And it really works out just fine. I got a gentleman that runs all my sales and does a heck of a job. And if you ever wanted to do a presentation on that, it's, it's really nice to see. Trust me, it's good ball. So, that's where that's at. So, I'll do a comparison of 2015 and 2016 on our tax rates. And then I'll simplify it a little bit more when we break it down, when we break it down, when we break it down in, let me see, right behind this. And it breaks down into one end, one end, two E, two C, two H, and a two out. And it also has the Watershed District of five mills. And that's included on the one hour district. So, anybody that's in Watershed pays the 15 mills in the residential plus, or the 20 mills in the non-residential. And they add the five mills for the Watershed District, okay? The cattle did pretty much, it pretty much stayed the same. It didn't really grow up all that much. And I guess with the market of cattle, it pretty much stayed the same. We do break it down with the state debt service, pretty much stayed the same, counting residential, also stayed the same. The non-residential maxed out at point 011850, that stayed the same. And the county debt service also stayed the same. So, in reality, everything's pretty much status quo, except the valuation, we're up about 8 million. Any questions?
I have to take it off the tax rolls.
No, I have buffalo fall under the vices. Yes, my buffalo fall under vices. Any vices?
Thank you.
Thank you. You got it.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove resolution R-1648, certificate of property tax rates in mills for the year 2016?
Motion to approve R-1648.
There's a motion, and I'll second it, to approve R-1648. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, we'll, I'll move to adjourn the special meeting. There's a motion to second to adjourn the special meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Call the order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners' work session meeting for September 13th, 2016. First item on the agenda is to approve that agenda. Is there any changes need to come on the work session agenda?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the work session agenda. I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The purpose of the Grant County work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed in the next regular meeting. And for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1601, we welcome the public to attend the county work session. However, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. Review the September 15th regular meeting agenda, and I'll turn the mic over to Charlene.
Mr. Chairman, this is our, we're down to public hearing number one. This is item B in the circuit. On the agenda, discussion regarding ordinance O-16-04 entitled 2016 Grant County Animal Control Ordinance. I'm gonna let Abby give you an update on some meetings and discussions she's had with the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting with the committee, as we told you all at the last meeting we would. And went through the concerns really raised by the public. And the committee made recommendations. And there are a few revisions in this draft, and they should be in red, that reflect what the committee had recommended that we do go ahead and change. The substantive changes, let's see, if you go to page 14, section 47. Under B says, "In rural sparsely populated areas of Grant County, an animal may be off-leash if it is under the supervision of the owner, handler, and is trained to respond to verbal control." Period. Before, we had said, "And is a working dog participating in acts of hunting, search and rescue, tracking, working, livestock, or show animal." We thought that was limiting it too much for hikers and others that take their dogs out. And they do have the ability to control the animal by verbal control. So, we wanted to include those people as well. So, that's why we limited, or we chopped off the end, that notation, so that it would include more people that have that ability. Then the other change on page 16, section 410, under E, we added a requirement to the litter permit, let's see, that second part, "An owner must have a litter permit available for inspection when giving away or selling cats and/or dogs. Any advertisement or posting for the sale or giving away of cats and/or dogs shall state the owner's litter permit number." We thought that was necessary to require owners to show that they have a litter permit. And then if they don't, then Buddy could track them down. For instance, say they put a Facebook post up or something, they would need to put their litter number there. And if they don't, then if, if that was reported, Buddy could go enforce the requirement that they have a litter permit.
It just tracks, what it does, just like you said, it tracks what the ordinance says you have to have, if you're gonna have that litter, you have to have that permit. And if they're at a Walmart selling, they might have to have that with them.
Right.
So, you gotta get a permit to give away a cat?
Yes, because you're supposed to have a permit. Well, I think the way it reads is.
But can I have him give me notice when he's gonna have a litter?
You're gonna have to get a permit.
You need to stay on time with your cat, all right?
Barn cats.
You said no.
And barn control is not an option either.
I don't think you have to worry about.
No, cats.
Taking your litter over to Walmart neither, do you?
No. Kind of easily take care of that.
And it's to help with, you know, unauthorized breeding.
People are selling authorized, you know, these dogs or cats are, got paces and everything else, and there's not, nothing there. Just protecting the bucket.
Yeah.
And the animals.
And then there are a few typos and things like that that I corrected.
Yeah.
All right. Any comments, questions? Next, item, public hearing number two, discussion regarding, regarding ordinance O-16-05, an ordinance authorizing issuance of Grant County, New Mexico State, State of New Mexico Department of Health lease appropriation refunding bond for the Fort Bear project, Series 2016, and an aggregate principal amount not exceeding 55 million for the purpose of defraying the cost of refunding and redeeming the county's outstanding state of New Mexico Department of Health lease appropriation bonds for Fort Bear project, Series 2008, that find out to the cost of designing, acquiring, constructing, and equipping a healthcare facility. In short, this is refunding the 2008 series bonds in order to save the state of New Mexico approximately $9 million in payments. We are having discussions with DLH currently in regards to proposed changes they want to the lease agreement. Those discussions are ensuing, but these, this ordinance will not reflect that at this point. So, any questions on that? No. Want to add anything to that?
No.
I'm sorry, it's been a little thirsty. Can I tell you it's been a little thirsty? Do you have any? Next, item R is a minute. We have two sets of minutes for recording and bearing your packet for review. The financial reports, approved, disapproved, September 9th, 2016 expenditure report. Randy, would you go over the highlights to that, please?
In your packet, you have an expenditure report approval. It's a book for a total sum of $3,316,996.92 as of September 9th. Of that, from accounts payable is $2,888,341.15. And that also includes two pay periods totaling $428,655.77. To highlight some of the major expenses that we incurred within this reporting period, our payment, a project payment for the Forgotten Veterans Workshop at Baton Park to Sacotham Construction for $32,000. July 2016 fuel charges for $23,000. Debt service payments in the amount of $872,618.28. Insurance renewals for volunteer fire departments for $34,000. Jet, jet A fuel and refuelers lease payments for $16,000. Off-road diesel for the road department totaling $13,000. A fire apparatus for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department totaling $396,000. Software renewals from Tyler Technologies for the treasurer's office and the assessor's office totaling $51,000. Three Dodge Caravans for the senior programs totaling $73,000. And a project payment for the conference and remodel totaling $153,000.
Moving on to business, item G, approved, disapproved proclamation declaring September 21st through the 24th, 2016 as Grant County Fair Days. Proclamation is in your packets.
I have to understand that Charlene wasn't gonna let him do it.
Bring a saddle?
Bring a saddle.
Sure, why not? I like that.
He won't like it so much after they've been on the carpet.
No, we were drinking coffee the other day, and I totally wanted to do that. You have to bring a saddle.
Does the animal control ordinance allow?
Sounds like a leash. You don't care.
And you got more control over him than you do a cat.
It's true, probably. Any more questions in the comments on that?
No. Shut up.
Okay. Item E, presentation from Mr. Richard Myers regarding the use of side-by-sides and UTVs on public roads within Grant County. He was at our previous meeting. He's included more information for your review in regards to Senate Bill 270 and UTVs. Item F, approved, disapproved proclamation declaring October 2016 as domestic violence awareness month. We did this last year. Basically, the same proclamation. Moving on to agreements, item G, approved, disapproved agreement number A-16-36, professional services agreement with Bohannon Houston Incorporated for completion of a comprehensive plan, asset management plan, and grant application support. This is the agreement to contract with Bohannon Houston to complete our comprehensive plan in this fiscal year, asset management plan in the next fiscal year. And then they also include in their grant application support, they will help us with any grant applications, doing some research, those sort of things. Questions? Item H, approved, disapproved agreement number A-16-42, joint road maintenance agreement with Pyramid Peak Mining LLC for road maintenance on Carlisle Road and Summit Peak Road. This is an annual agreement that we renew each year. Same agreement, no changes. Any comments on that, Earl? No. Item I, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-43, inmate housing agreement with Sierra County. This is a contract to house inmates for Sierra County. Occasionally, we house for them in a couple other counties. We needed to have a recontract in place outlining the custody as well as who's responsible for transportation, medical, et cetera. Item J, approved, disapproved agreement A-16-44, inmate housing agreement with Hidalgo County. Same thing, we currently are housing for Hidalgo County and need to have a human. Moving on to resolutions, item K, approved, disapproved resolution number R-16-43, loss prevention committee formation. We have tasked Gilbert Hilton with a loss prevention committee and rolling out a safety program for the county through the New Mexico Association of Counties. The first step in that is to have the commission appoint a loss prevention committee. Those members consist of Mike Bonifat at the detention center, Joanne DeZola at the detention center, Daniel Ray in the planning department, Captain Kevin Clam at the sheriff's office, Gilbert Hilton, Earl Moore with the road department, Jody Avment with the road department, Justin Reese for Public Works, and Manny Maldonado with the sheriff's office and also as union representation. So, any questions on that?
Yeah, I wasn't pointing at that, had we? I didn't think so.
Item L, approved, disapproved resolution number R-16-44, declaring the vacation and abandonment of the San Ysidro street property and authorizing the sale thereof. Abby worked on this, this started even before my time. Do you wanna bring it up to me on what we're doing?
Actually, I think Misha's probably the most knowledgeable on this. He did a great job in moving this and another property forward and being abandoned.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioner?
Yes, we had two properties, they're both listed here. I'll just touch base on both of them real quick. But they, this one specifically is a property that, it's in an estate now, and they want to sell the property. And they were utilizing part of the San Ysidro road that doesn't really exist as the San Ysidro road. And so, they wanted to purchase it from the county. We sent it through the road abandonment committee. They did a survey and also had an appraisal done. So, they're gonna pay fair market value for it based on the appraisal.
So, they're abandoning the road? Thank you. It's the end of the road.
Thank you. Item M, approved, disapproved resolution R-16-45, supporting the 2017 legislative priorities of the New Mexico Association of Counties. There are four priorities that the board has brought forward. First one being the Whistleblower Protection Act. This supports amendments to, among other things, to better define the definition of good faith by requiring some minimal threshold of evidence to file a claim, narrow the definition of retaliatory action, limit unlawful and improper acts to violations of state or federal law, and narrow the universe of individuals to whom a complaint may be communicated as a precondition to filing a claim. Counties are seeing more and more whistleblower lawsuits. And so, this is an attempt to get the legislature, legislators to take a look at that. New Mexico 911 Act revision, this is amending the 911 surcharge statute, this has come up. Didn't make it anywhere last year. I know that they brought it forward the year before. I'm gonna try that again. The forfeiture Act, this supports amendments to the forfeiture Act that remove unreasonable burdens placed on law enforcement agencies, allowing law enforcement agencies to retain forfeited property under limited circumstances, clarify the appropriate use of forfeiture, and ensure that due process rights of properties involved are honored. And the last one is capital outlay for non-governmental entities. This supports recommendations that allow local boards of county commissioners to accept, approve, and review non-governmental entities' capital outlay funds and their fiscal impacts to county finances prior to submission to the state legislature. It will suspend acceptance of 2017 legislative session capital outlay funds for purchase of vehicles, IT, and any capital outlay expenditure of less than $50,000, and authorize a collection at 3% administrative fee. And counties that own the state are being handed basically capital outlay appropriations that they knew nothing about not being able to charge any sort of admin fees when their appropriation comes up short, and the counties are having to come up with a shortfall. So, then hopefully, this will clean that up and protect counties where we have, we have to accept and approve those before they are submitted to the state. That's all of those, unless you have any questions? Need to gain more information? Item N, approved, disapproved resolution R-16-46, adoption of required community development block grants, CDVG, animal certification and commitment. What this resolution does is it is adopting the citizen participation plan, fair housing plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, Section 3 plan, and certifies that we are in compliance with the federal and state procurement code. These are requirements for CDVG grant appropriations, which we will be, is a tentative award to go towards the Tu Casa project from CDVG funds. So, we have to follow all the CDVG rules for that, for that money.
Good change every day, I appreciate it. Nice work, I appreciate it.
Item O, approved, disapproved resolution number R-16-47, declaring the vacation and abandonment of the alleyway adjacent to lot line of B&amp;H City's property and authorizing the sale thereof.
This is the second one for today, or for Thursday. This property, it's an alleyway that was designated as, as a public property, but it's been utilized by the home there as the access for his garage ever since the home was built. And again, we had them do a survey, had an appraisal done, sent it to the road abandonment committee, and everyone's decided that it's not needed by the county and that he could purchase it.
Item P, approved, disapproved resolution number R-16-49, accepting roads within the Rio member subdivision for maintenance. I believe that's yours as well? Or Earl's?
This is, that's one of Stevie Berry's subdivisions out there, members. They have Fowler Brothers come in there late, of course, they did a real good job on it. Everything looks really good out there. How many? 1.4.
1.4, like 5 and 1/2. Moving on to bids and requests for proposals. Item Q, approved/disapproved bid number B-16-03, for Pinos, Aljos, Ellis, Mesa Fire Station. And this has been a little bit of a tricky project since it's off the grid and require solar and the generator. Opened bids last week, there were four bidders. The apparent low bidder is Sacatone Construction of Silver City. Our recommendation will be to award the base bid of $477,369.10 with a 30 KV solar system in the amount of $43,000. And Chief Whitmarsh has a $400,000 NFA loan, and she has additional monies in reserves to make up the difference. They will also be responsible for drilling the well and purchasing the generator. And she has, yes, she indicates she does, I spoke with her.
True.
Yes, she has submitted a letter to Linda, moving some of her monies over into her capital fund and there was sufficient. And she assures me that she also has a quote on her will, but I'm not sure that it's, I know there's a lot of waste of water in that area, so it's, it comes in, but she appears to have sufficient money. But I'll double check again. Item R, approved/disapproved RFP number 16-01, multi-jurisdictional mitigation plan. There was one response from House Air, and it would be recommended that we award to House Air. Next item, recess as the Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Grant County Indigent and Hospital Care Claims Board, which is item S near Packers, approved/disapproved August 2016, half-time claims in the amount of $13,242.35. That consists of 14 claims to heal the Regional Medical Center in the amount of $12,694.35, and one claim to heal the Regional Medical Center ambulance service in the amount of $548.
So we'll move on to county reports. Ryan, you want to start?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Couple of updates for Heal Regional Medical Center. To start with, finances always. So I'm referring to the month of July, first month of our fiscal year, and we had a negative operating margin of only about $80,000, that's our revenue minus expense. When you start to add in depreciation and those things, it brings our bottom line to a negative 400,000, 450K for the month of July. And, you know, this is something we've been talking about for quite a long time, talking to our board very seriously about these issues, and it's one of the justifications for what I'll talk about in a little bit, is the request for the mill levy. That depreciation number is the number that drives us to a significant negative bottom line. That depreciation number represents, it's one major indicator of our need to replace capital equipment. So we're able to meet our operational obligations, but it's funding our ongoing capital equipment that we continue to struggle with, which is the main focus of our request for support from citizens of Grant County, and I'll go into that in a little more detail. Cash is at 112 days, so we're still okay with cash, it continues to trickle downward, but we're still above average compared to other hospitals our size. And that's a result of many years of, I think, strong operations that developed cash in the bank for us, and we presently have no debt. So that's what's allowing us to weather this storm of healthcare change over these last couple of years. Another contributor to our negative bottom line is this project we've been talking about, the biggest, most complicated project in Heal Regional's recent history, which is our electronic health record upgrade. We're almost two years into this project, we've had to extend the go-live date for another several months, and we hope to be able to bring that to a close soon, but we incur significant additional costs with this project, and we hope to bring that to a close in the next couple of months, but that continues to challenge us. Good news, we, you know, every two years we do our caregiver survey, our caregiver engagement survey. Sometimes I, you know, I get questions in the community, how's them around at the hospital, those kind of questions. So our caregiver engagement survey, one of our questions, we ask our caregivers to rate their own level of engagement. We define engagement as an individual's willingness to go above and beyond in their job, above and beyond for their fellow caregivers, above and beyond for all of our customers, and to rate themselves on a scale of one to 10. And the data for this survey went up compared to our last survey, we're at a 92% positive rating, anybody that scored themselves a six through 10. So the caregivers at Heal Regional, 80% of them score themselves a nine or a 10, their willingness to go above and beyond for anybody who walks in our door. And anyone scored themselves six to 10 that positive rating, 92% of our caregivers are willing to go above and beyond for the citizens of Grant County. I want to jump into the last item for discussion, and that's further discussion about our healthy hospital, healthy community initiative. You know, as a Grant County-owned hospital, I think the last county-owned hospital in New Mexico, they're quite rare. GRMC is in a position like most rural hospitals, 14 other counties in New Mexico already provide some form of tax support to their local hospital. We're finally at a point in our evolution where the responsible decision is to ask our citizens for support with a four-mill levy. I appreciate all the help, our county assessor, all of you, our county attorney, our county manager, helping support me through this process to get this question on the ballot for November 8th. Appreciate the commissioner's support in that process. And now we're at a point where we're beginning to talk to individuals and community groups to help them to understand what we're asking, why we're asking, so that they can make the most informed decision in the ballot box on November 8th. The four-mill levy would support Heal Regional with approximately $3.3 million of funds that will be earmarked for capital equipment and building upgrades only. We have a 33-year-old building that continues to require ongoing upgrades, we have some construction projects that we need to complete, and these monies would be earmarked, if approved, by the citizens of Grant County, would be earmarked for those projects. We'd be reporting that to our board and reporting that transparently to the commissioners in these public meetings, so everybody would be able to see where this money is going. The monies would go, if approved, would go for things like supporting the construction projects that we have upcoming to enlarge our operating room, recovery room, that's a bottleneck for us. We can't get our citizens into surgery quick enough, and so this supports better care for our citizens. It will allow us to then move our labor and delivery suites and upgrade those. It will allow us to, it will support us in purchasing things like our CAT scan upgrades, our echocardiography scanners, x-ray equipment upgrades, water piping in the building that needs continual replacing at this point, we need to replace all of our air handling units. So there's an ongoing list of capital equipment and construction opportunities, and we want our citizens to know that, if approved, this would be earmarked specifically for those types of projects. Without these kind of upgrades, here's kind of the crux of the issue, the why. The crux of the issue is, if we can't continue to upgrade equipment that supports certain services, our citizens will be forced, like many rural hospitals in the state and the country, to go out of town for basic services. So, recent example up in Las Vegas, New Mexico, a hospital lost their OB services, now the citizens in that county need to travel to Santa Fe for their OB needs and to have a baby. That's just one example, but these are happening all across the state, all across the country. The cost of going out of town, in our case, a citizen would be driving to Las Cruces at a minimum, and the lost time from work, and if they have to stay in a hospital down there, families traveling back and forth, all those costs, we want to avoid that. And with the four-mill levy, the average cost per year is probably less than one or two of those trips to Las Cruces. We want to keep our four-star quality care as close to home as possible for our citizens. That's really the crux of the issue. The equipment that we'd be looking to upgrade and to support new services is to keep this high-quality care close to home. Otherwise, the alternative is, over time, we lose equipment, we lose services, and people are traveling to Las Cruces at a minimum for basic service that they're used to getting in here. So I'd like to close and just ask, we're going to be talking to lots of people, all kind of community groups, people are open to come see me, email me, call me, we'll be talking to the press and getting the message out through meetings such as this. We're asking for the community, Grant County's, support to keep this high-quality care close to home, and we'd be happy to answer any question, talk to any group to help them understand the whats and the whys of this project. I stand for questions.
So, because I've been out talking this, and people have been calling me and seeing me at the different places and asking me, the number one question is, why do we go for a two rather than a four?
Right. The number that we were trying to get to, it starts with the number, and the number we were trying to get support with was in that $3 million area, and this, the four-mill gets us to 3.3. If you remember my report from the close of our fiscal year a month ago, we ended the fiscal year, 3.3 million dollars in the red, negative, and most of that is in depreciation, that line item. And depreciation, once again, is the indicator of the equipment that we need to replace, that's the amount of money. So it started with understanding the amount of money we needed support with, and it's in that three to four million dollar range. So that's where we then back-engineered the equation. If we need that, how many mills gets us to that? And thanks to our county assessor helped us understand the funding and the millage, and it was through that equation that brought us to the four-mill. Two-mill only gets us half of that. So the reason is, it starts with that $3 million need for the hospital to cover that depreciation, to refund that capital equipment.
In other words, you have two, you would need to accomplish the services that is needed for this community.
Yes, two would obviously help, anything helps, but it wouldn't help us to cover the full depreciation. Our capital equipment and building upgrades over the next many years is probably going to top five-plus million dollars. We're just asking for help with three of that. The rest, obviously, we'll cover, and of course, operating expenses and other projects, we have to earn through, you know, doing efficient, effective business practices.
So, what you're saying is that the four is not, maybe the wrong word, improving, but it's keeping the services that we presently have intact?
Yes, some of it will be for pure maintenance, replacing water piping, replacing pieces of equipment that have aged out. Other portions of it will be for upgrades. The medical field is constantly, constantly evolving, and if you don't keep up with that evolution, some of the outcomes of that are, not only are people having to travel out for services, but if you don't keep up with services and, you know, upgrades in equipment and new technology, you also have trouble recruiting and retaining physicians. Physicians want to practice where they have the equipment that they need to serve their patients the best that they have. So you also start to run into problems recruiting and retaining physicians, and once that starts to happen, not only are you losing equipment, you're losing good physicians from the community, and all of the results of that equation. Nurses, you know, who we've struggled to recruit as it is, start to go towards hospitals that have the equipment, have the services that they want to practice in.
Like I've heard, they've talked to me about this too, is that, well, is that really necessary, this construction, that we're going to be, that's your proposal?
Yes, so the labor and delivery is connected to the operating room, they're right next to each other. We have to expand our operating room recovery, that's the bottleneck. We have seven OR suites, but we only have five beds, space for five beds to recover. So you can imagine, as surgeries come through, that's the backup, we have to expand that area. The only place to expand it is into labor and delivery. So that causes us to have to move that out. We could talk about the fact that, you know, the rooms are too small in labor and delivery, there are shared bathrooms, which is not the best situation with laboring mothers and families. So we could talk about, we need to upgrade those anyway, but really, it's the OR space that forces us to move that out. And while we're doing that, obviously, we want to upgrade those new labor and delivery rooms so that they have enough space for equipment, it's unsafe in there when you have too much equipment in there, and family members, so they're connected in that way. You're welcome.
I'd be curious to know if you've had a dialogue with Freeport-Mackay, since I think they're one of the big dogs in the taxi scene.
Yes, we recently had a discussion, a very good discussion with leadership of Freeport-Mackay, and obviously, this has an impact to our minds, and things are tight for the minds, but we were able to do a presentation for them to show what we've been talking about here, to look at the significant decreases in state funding over the last several years, to look at the impact of our bottom line, so they at least had a strong understanding of why we're doing this. They have a strong understanding, they know now that we're one of the last rural counties in New Mexico to ask for this kind of support. They, I think they know now that, you know, this wasn't our first decision, we need help, we need help from the community, we need help from them. I think they understand that this is a key piece of the puzzle to maintain the services for this community. We also understand that this is a significant impact on the minds, and we pledge to continue to dialogue and keep each other up to date with how things evolve. So we understand the impacts to each other, and they understand what and why we're doing it. So, short answer, yes, we did have a good meeting with them.
Okay. It's all ahead.
Thanks, Brian. Just another thing, a lot of citizens are really concerned about taxes and Freeport-Mackay, and I'm glad the chair brought it up, because I know they're very concerned about it, and so are we, because, you know, their presence is important to our community.
We agree.
And of course, then, some of these times are a little tough right now, because the state of New Mexico hasn't recovered like the other states, and money's short, and when we're talking about the increase, so I would highly recommend people to, before they go yes or no, to look into it, see what kind of increase they're going to have, and go into the assessor's office, and they can get that information.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your support, appreciate your questions.
Thanks, Brian. Mike?
Mr. Hall, I'd like to submit one report for the reporting period of August 13th through September 8th of 2016. Item number one is continuation of this process. Item number two, we have no vacancies currently at the detention facility. Item number three is also, status remains the same. On our training update, this is a continuation of our mandatory 40-hour training, we continued through August with that. We had five members of the detention center that attended the 40-hour refresher. We also have three newly hired officers who are currently attending their 80-hour in-service in-house basic training, and these new officers will also be required to complete 160 hours of field hour training before they're released to a shift, and we make it mandatory that they complete all those training hours. Item number five on our inmate support program, the committee and myself will be going to Las Cruces tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the Las Cruces Police Department again, and this is to see what we can do for the formation, the crisis intervention. Item number five on our inmate support program, uh, the committee and myself will be going to Las Cruces tomorrow. We'll be meeting with the Las Cruces Police Department again, and this is, uh, see what we can do to, uh, for the formation of crisis intervention team here in the community, and hopefully, we can come back with some information and some funding sources to be able to put that crisis team together. And currently, uh, I've been contacted by approximately fifteen volunteers from Grant and Luna County who will be attending that meeting tomorrow. So, um, we're looking forward to bringing back some information and see if we can put that team together. Item number six on our recognition of work program, Officer Matthew Madrid has been nominated as employee of the month for August two thousand and sixteen. Officer Madrid has been nominated by his supervisors and peers for his work ethics and his unselfish dedication to the detention center. So we congratulate Officer Madrid for these accomplishments, and Officer Madrid is one of our newly hired officers, and, uh, I can say that he is doing an outstanding job for us, and, uh, we're very fortunate that we were able to bring him on at the detention center. Item number seven is our statistics. Average daily population for September eighth is eighty-eight, which is two more than last month. High population males is seventy-two, one more than last month, uh, one less than last month. High population females is twenty-nine, is three more than last month. Currently for September eighth, uh, there were ninety-nine inmates booked into the facility. Between September tenth and September eighth, which is the one-year period, I give you this report just for comparison purposes, uh, the daily population during this one-year period back in, uh, between September tenth and September eight, uh, two thousand and fifteen, September eighth of sixteen, there were seventy-one. The average length of stay for this reporting period is thirty-two point four-two days. Um, the two, I've provided you with the ARC report and also the CJ five survey of jail inmate confinement reports. If you have any questions, with those two reports. Okay? Uh, statistics show that an increase in activity is compared to last month. Item number eight on our monthly arrest totals for August of two thousand and sixteen, Silver State Police Department had a hundred and seventy, Grant County Sheriff's Department thirty-one, New Mexico State Police thirty-five, Bear Police fifteen, Santa Clara three, Hurley Police had five, Western New Mexico University had two. And the detention center held seven prisoners from Hidalgo County and other jurisdictions. Uh, item number nine, detention facility conducted sixteen district court transports. Division one magistrate court were forty-three, division two magistrate court, one, municipal court in Silver, uh, Santa Clara, and Bear, all were zero. And we conducted four medical transports. So the total number of transport during this reporting period is sixty-four as compared to ninety-eight last month. And the last item is our probation violation statistics. We have twenty-seven, currently have twenty-seven inmates that are under probation violations. Um, probation violation inmates awaiting transport to other facilities, including rehabilitation in the Department of Corrections. We have nine that are currently waiting, and the average time from judgment to sentencing is about thirty days for transport. Uh, total inmates charged with warrant arrests, again, extremely high, is fifty-five. And so the total number of special management inmates on the twelfth of, uh, this month equals seven. That's my report, sir.
Any questions?
Mike, as the time element, you know, we talked about in the past about how long we're holding these parolees or the state prisoners, people who qualified under this funding. Has that time decreased or increased or stayed the same, or what's your feeling on that?
Between the time transported and, it's, it's about the same, sir.
About the same?
Yes, sir.
And hasn't gotten any better since the issue has been resolved?
Um, no, and I, yeah, I think there's some other variables that probably come into play, but because of those, it, it pretty much has stayed the same.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Commissioner Chairman, Commissioner, uh, we've been quite busy, uh, as y'all probably already know, we've got six projects going on right now, and there's three more projects that's probably coming up for bids here in the next couple of months that we're gonna also have to be involved in. Uh, the guys have been working pretty hard, steady. I'm hoping to get about four of those projects done by the, by the end of, uh, by the middle of next month. Other than that, it's pretty much business as usual down there. I do want to remind the residents, as it dries out, we've got all the blades running, and we'll get to everybody's road as we can, and, uh, everybody's concerned as we can.
Yeah, well, uh, off to the one of yours, or on Rosedale Road?
I talked with the paving contractor, and right now, their plan is tied up out here on this project on that.
Okay.
And until they get done, we cannot get any hot mix, because it's a different kind of mix than what we would use.
You should let them know.
Uh, but I did talk with Joseph what their plan is. Soon as they get done, they're going to start on that Grant County Airport, uh, September the twenty-sixth, I believe, and they're going to work seven days a week until they get that thing done. So probably that week, they'll start milling over there on Rosedale, so we'll have it done. So as soon as they get down to the Grant County Airport, then they can jump over there and get that paved.
Yeah. The person who called me, I told him, I said, you know, considering the weather that we've had, I can't imagine the stress and, and work that's been put on his crew, and so we'll be patient.
Yeah, we've been, that's the reason I got so many projects going on, and, and I don't know if I'm finished, because we're just bouncing around to where we can find a place to do something.
But not fires ever work.
Yep.
But no pun intended, but.
So we'll, we'll get it done.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Just going and talking with Earl just said, so the airport project will start on the twenty-sixth. They believe it will be done within five to six days, uh, but a project of this magnitude and this amount of money, uh, you know, there's always something that comes up. But, uh, we've been working with boutique, uh, they will be flying out of Demi. Uh, we, the airport will be shut down to, uh, commercial and private, uh, plane owners. Uh, they have all received a phone call and a letter in the mail from us, letting us know this information is out there. There'll be a NOTAM out there as well, as we get closer to the project, which lets the, all the pilots know what's going on and what, what issues we have at the airport. Uh, unless you have any questions on that, um, that's all I have for that. Cora Caminos, I'll go with that real quick. We're ending the fiscal year, as everybody knows, that's a federal grant, so their fiscal year is different than, uh, the state's. Uh, we are doing really well, we're under budget. Uh, I'm hoping the next meeting in October, that our director will be here, uh, and I will give you a, a little more breakdown on ridership and, and, uh, money and how we move forward, uh, with the program. Uh, Cross Country Meet, I know you asked me about that. Uh, it is coming up this week. We are over there, we're a little short-staffed at Public Works, but we're going to get it done. Uh, I hope no issues come up, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Fire Department, as everybody knows, it's, we've had a lot of moisture, so wireline is down, but gave us an opportunity for some of the fire departments, the BFDs, to get to support for the State Fire Marshal's Training Conference, which lasted a week. It included EMS, um, some EMS and some structural firefighter training, so quite a few members from several departments were able to attend that. So that gives us the opportunity to, to still stay, uh, trained on, on, uh, structure fire protection and structured firefighting. Uh, they did have some competitions over there, and I think Tyrone, uh, actually won a lot of those competitions over there. We'll bring that to you, uh, probably in the next, next, be, next month. Uh, Fairgrounds, uh, we're working over at the Fairgrounds, we know there's been some water issues over there, we had one last year, uh, so we're working at that. I'm having Justin's crew make sure they're out there on a daily basis, because we know the fair's coming up and want to make sure that we have no issues. Him and I will be looking at that, uh, pretty closely, and, uh, so we're out there, uh, on a daily basis. Weeds, 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 we're working on the weeds at Baton Park as well, uh, trying to make sure. I know that, uh, there's, we've had some phone calls from county buildings about the weeds. We're just limited with resource right now, we're trying to do the best we can to get out there. You know, you cut and it rains, and they grow right back, so just be patient with us.
And I know it's a tough.
It is a blessing, yes, sir.
It's a pain.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a blessing.
So, other than that, uh, unless you have any questions, uh, that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Randy. Mr. Earl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall. Um, first I'll just talk about Tucasa, just a little bit. Commissioner Hall knows most of what's going on, but we're working on the completion, uh, for the utilities and right-of-ways, uh, for Tucasa. Um, as was discussed earlier, uh, there's a CDBG, uh, grant, and so we do have some requirements, uh, there's environmental requirements, we've sent those off for review. There's going to be one, uh, not one, one more item, there's several that are going to come up, but, uh, one that hopefully we can have, uh, come up quickly is, uh, the grantee must designate a certifying official, but we can't do that until, uh, we have the grant number. Uh, the certifying official will assume overall responsibility for the environmental review process, and, uh, I'm figuring that's going to be me. So, uh, we will get that paperwork as soon as we have a grant to you guys to, um, certify. North Hurley Phase One, uh, advertising, uh, has been happening this week. Um, pre-bid meeting is tentatively set for September twenty-third at eleven AM. The bid opening date is set for October third, with a tentative award date for the commission meeting October twentieth. The comprehensive plan, uh, as we get the approval, um, hopefully on Thursday, to move forward with the agreement with Bohannon Houston, we'll get started, uh, on that. We did apply with, uh, NMFA for the grant, twelve thousand five hundred. That is looking pretty good, uh, for us to get that to help, um, recoup some of the costs. Um, as you know, LS Mesa, the bids have been received, and, uh, we have that on the agenda. Um, Santa Rita Fire Station, we're finalizing the drawings with the architect, and we'll hopefully get that, uh, ready to go for pre-bid, uh, meeting and get out to bid also. And one final thing is, we're looking at, um, some solar for county buildings, and we're starting a feasibility study with Triple H Solar to see if, uh, if that works out. Any questions?
No, probably just more of a comment, I know over the last two months is that, you know, a lot of those citizens just don't realize, you know, our departments and our staff that we have and how dedicated they are, uh, our elected officials, our staff and such, and, you know, it's just been such a privilege to work with you guys, uh, if it's whatever it is, the, the sheriff's office, assessor, uh, planning, whatever, uh, you guys have just done an outstanding job, and, uh, and I want to thank you. I said that because now I'm going to ask you about Wind Canyon.
Uh, Wind Canyon, we, um, I have seen a draft of the RFP, uh, Earl and I got together on that, uh, also with, uh, County Manager Charlene, and we gave some input back, and I'm just waiting on another draft to come out. Jacob got pretty busy with the LS Mesa, uh, bid process, and, um, I know it's, it's kind of slowing down a little bit, but I am looking to see another draft of the RFP for that.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, on the North Hurley Road project, I'll be attending your pre-work, but not as a county official, as a transportation provider for Curbey School, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I, I.
You figured that, huh? Okay. Closing a road in the district's going to be rough. Okay, um, Randy, you don't have anything else on finances, do you? No?
Do you have any other questions?
Okay. No, I don't believe we do.
Point over, deep financial support. Any other questions?
Okay.
You want to give a report, don't you? Shut up, Commissioner.
Then we'll move to the managers' report.
What are you seeing, what you've been working on? Um, currently, the auditors are here working on our, um, fiscal year sixteen, uh, year end audit. We did receive, uh, final budget approval from DFC. Um, we have, currently, uh, as far as RFPs that we're working on, Jacob has been a little swamped. We have an RFP out, uh, for healthcare services for the detention center. We had a mandatory, uh, pre-bid meeting yesterday, and we have one provider show. Um, so it looks like we're be struggling again there. But we do really need to take a look at the level of services we're providing there and expand that if possible. Um, I am working on a draft RFP for, to upgrade our website, uh, county website. I probably receive at least one complaint a week on the, um, the website, um, lack of information and transparency, so we will be, um, hopefully sometime, um, in October, releasing that RFP to solicit contractors to physically scrap that one and start all over. Um, the conference center is moving along nicely, um, probably at substantial completion. Um, we are in the process of ordering equipment and furniture. Uh, the draft RFP for management services, we'd like to take a look at, um, that will be out. We'll have that ready this week for Jacob to release, um, to look at that as an option to have a management firm come in and run that. I've, uh, been working with the sheriff and Captain Flamm over the last several months, well, actually, since I started here, but actively over the last several months on the radio communication issues, and I'm happy to say that I'm probably stealing your thunder, but, um, that the problem has actually been pinpointed, um, as a frequency issue with the Al Paso County Sheriff's Office, um, and the location of their equipment interfering with ours, yeah, very interesting. So at least we know what the problem is. Um, that makes me feel a little more comfortable that we know what the problem is, um, and seems to be some resolve there, um, rather than not knowing what's going on, so, um, because our safety is first and foremost, um, and when they can't communicate out there, they're trying to flip channels, it's, it's rather scary. So, um, I'm, I'm happy that we're making some serious progress there. Um, that's about it, other than business as usual at our office, it's been busy, um, trying to keep up and be prepared for the new commissioners coming on board, so, any questions?
Anything else? You guys? All right. Take a motion, Major?
Motion, Major.
Second. All those in favor, six, five, say no.
Fine.
Motion passed.